Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, December 17th, and this is a meeting of the Board of Ed's Building and School Facilities Committee. And before I move on to the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to President Pagano for an announcement.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, whatever holiday you practice. Best wishes for a healthy and safe one. Our dear friend Jason Van Stone left the board and chairmanship of this committee, what was it, two months ago almost, when he moved down to another township? And Jason had counted on Ann Sweeney to be his vice chair for building and school facilities. I have been impressed with Ann's performance the entire time while she's been taking on that interim. And as I'm a firm believer from promoting from within, I have decided to make Ann the permanent chairman of this committee. And I've also been able to strong our Mr. Charles Stango to join us in this committee as a committee member. And I thank both of them for their service and for their willingness to take on this responsibility. So, thank you very much, guys. Ann, yours.
Thank you, President Pagano.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so moving on to our agenda. The first item on the agenda is a PowerPoint project update, and I will turn it over to Will Clark.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Congratulations on your appointment. Good evening, commissioners and committee members. Tonight, I'm joined by a number of folks from the construction team. Mike LeBlanc from the city is here, Dave Cody from WDC, and maybe Ken Russo as well. Brian Grant is here from Newfield Construction, our construction manager. Mike Serrano is here from Friar, our architecture firm. And we may have some other team members who join us as well. What I'm going to try to do is share my screen if I can here in a second. And we will pull up the PowerPoint. So hopefully you can see that. Is that popping up now for everybody?
Yep.
Slowly but surely, okay. Great. So, just reorienting everybody, our Wendell Cross project, in the end, this is what it's going to look like with two playgrounds where those folks are standing there. Moving along here. There we go. That's an overview of the site. You see essentially the building kind of wrapping around where the old building used to be and a whole new section there as you come up the driveway on the left, which would be the younger grades. Those playground areas will be, as I told you where those folks are, we're standing in that first rendition. The parking up at the top, turnaround at the bottom where the main entrance will be. And there'll be another play area up at the top there. You can see the top left where the existing playscape is. There'll be some grass area up there as well. Just to reorient everybody, we're talking about a pre-K eight with three grades per, or three classrooms per grade. And it's about 677 or a few more students when it's all is said and done, and we expect filled up. About 86,000 square feet. Very similar to Carrington, for those of you involved in the project back then. And Friar Architecture was involved in that project as well. We like a lot of the features of the building and the simplicity of the design with respect to construction, which hopefully allows us to move along cost effectively and efficiently with this operation as well and put more resources into the kids than the building itself. But still a really functional design. Those of you who were there at the beam, the last beam hanging and had the opportunity to tour through it with us. I think Charles was there in the little tour afterwards. Really, what they're doing on the inside is going to be very, very impressive. We've had the state out a number of times, and they're very impressed by the work by Friar and coming together by Newfield and just how it's going to set up for the kids. You have approved us through phase three, and we are in the midst of phase three. And the change orders we'll discuss tonight are all really from phase three. That's the construction phase. So, we are plodding along. We're doing our best to get the place buttoned up and winterized. Much of it is already. There's temporary heat, so that the goal is to get that roof pieces finished, the other flashing finished, and the last section, that pre-K section, winterized and covered and so that we're able to work on the inside throughout the winter. Ideally, it really just keeps this thing moving along and catching up. We've been working throughout the week and many, many Saturdays with really full crews out there, catching up, taking advantage of the weather as best we could. Obviously, today is a bit of a hiccup. But because we've gotten that paving done over the last few weeks, that primer coat down there, we should be able to have that area plowed out and have folks back on site tomorrow as well as Saturday. We plan to know when the weather coming in to have a bigger weekend. Where we're moving next, and we'll probably be back to you in January, is the playground phase and the furniture, fixtures, equipment, and technology phase. Debbie Ponte was with us tonight. The principal's been very intimately involved with the playground design and planning. Just have a few i's to dot and t's to cross on that. That will come back to you to review the actual playground plans, and both for the older kids and the younger kids. And then that would go up with your approval to the state for their final review of that. I think the timing of us getting that to you in January keeps us moving right along. We're working with the vendor, the great confidence, saying they just finished a project out to the city out of Hopeville Park. Ann Friar and Newfield have both worked with them before, and they've been very, very good with Debbie and her team on taking their ideas and aligning it with the plans and the budget. So, we look to get that to you shortly, in the next few weeks. Furniture, fixtures, equipment, and technology also very close to being done. We're just, again, dotting some i's, crossing some t's with Will Zuda in the technology department, Chris Harmon on some of the equipment. And also work with Debbie and her team and Norine Buckley in as far as the furniture and what's going to be in each room and so forth. So, that'll be back to you as well in January. Tonight, what we're going to discuss, and we gave you some backup associated with it, are change orders nine through 14. You've approved one through eight previously. And we're going to ask for your approval of those tonight. Those will be the action item or de-action item for tonight. With your approval, we'll submit those up to the state. The state's rules are, do require certain time sensitivity to both putting your change orders into the queue and into the process and getting it up to them for review and approval. So, we're asking, we want to move those things along. We didn't want to wait till January to get these to you. So, we ask you to consider those, and we'll talk about those tonight and answer any questions you have and hopefully approve those. Also, I want to do a little bit of a phase three update. I've kind of given you a little bit as we've been going along here. But we are moving along with the construction. Again, those of you who were out for that last beam being put up there have seen the progress. Masonry now is just about completed as far as the building exterior and structure and the roofing of most of the sections has been completed. We're finishing up in that last area where the pre-K is on that left from that original rendering. And once that work is done, it allows us to then sort of winterize all those areas, have the temporary heat working so that the folks, the various trades can work inside. The upper part, they're already doing that, walls, classroom, plumbing, electrical, all of that's going on. And with the addition of the buttoning up of the last section, that will be going throughout. So, they'll be able to kind of sequence the work with the various trades and the various subcontractors and just kind of keep everything going through the winter with that heat. The driveway base coat was completed, and you'll see that in the photos I'll show you in a second. And that's allowing them to get much, you know, we had kind of a soupy, muddy area there for a while when we got that rain a couple of months ago. And frankly, that's one of the biggest pieces of the change orders here. We had started to put that binder coat down when we got a couple of nice days in a row, and as luck would have it, then just poured the days following. So, we, you know, we had a choice to make. Do we stick with that binder coat that was getting soupy itself? Or do we better part of valor, you know, go with what God, the hand God dealt us and just redo that binder coat, which is what we did. And that's one of the bigger cost items. But that's allowing us now to be getting that equipment right up to the building without any issues. We could plow that easily and then really just keep the guys and the crews in and out and do what they need to do, the delivery of some of the bigger items that'll be coming in the next couple of months, HVAC units, et cetera. You know, we really need that paved area. So, that was a really, really big milestone. And Brian from Newfield can speak to more of that in specific terms if necessary. And again, as I said, that interior work really humming along. And frankly, some of the delay or the point that we got with that site work that we talked about in some of the prior change orders, there's boulders, if you will, the potatoes that we found in the rocks. You know, we're really working very, very hard, and WDC is helping us work with Newfield and Friar to catch up as much time as we can. We've been very fortunate with the weather thus far. Hopefully, today is a bit of an anomaly, and we'll be able to keep working in the winter and keep the crews on the job and catch up some more time as we go through the winter and then it's the spring and summer. Again, we'll be back to you in January with phase four. Successfully got that contract out to a state contractor that everybody was familiar with. Again, just filled the, finished a project for Hopeville Playground for the city, did a great job. He really hit it out of the park, I think, as far as the design goes. It was very collaborative and cooperative with Debbie on the one hand, which is very important to us. But frankly, just as important fiscally on the other with us and staying within budget. So, that was very important. And again, as I mentioned, the FFE and T, just got some i's, crossed some t's. For those of you who have not been through this process before, that's all the furniture within the building and the office stuff, the classroom stuff. But it's also maybe the kitchen elements, the smallwares, the custodial package, you know, what kind of equipment we need in that building. That's all been reviewed with our internal team. A very strong point of that to make sure we had everybody engaged, so we've had a number of i's on these things and reviewing them. Many things will come off of state contracts. Some items will be bid out in that process. As soon as you give that green light and we're back to you, we'll continue. We'll be able to stay on pace with our schedule. The technology piece, Will Zuda's been intimately involved with me on that. Again, we want to, committees looked at it, Debbie Ponte, the curriculum folks involved, making sure we have the right pieces to the puzzle for what they'll need in the building, wiring, Wi-Fi, security, voice-over IP phones, et cetera. So, all of that is part of those packages, which you'll see in a few weeks. So, I just want to run through a couple of photos to give you some visual here of what's going on. And maybe while I'm doing that, Ann, I'll just scroll through these. And if you want to ask any questions, we've got our whole team here. We could dive into the change orders in as much depth as you'd like. I would just say, to summarize them, if you put them all together, we're drawing, it's essentially $136,214.18 is coming out of the construction manager contingency and a total of $98,803.23 is coming out of the owner's contingency. That's a total of $235,017.41 for these change orders. And that will leave a balance in the CM contingency of about $200,000, 19659064, and in the owner's contingency of $138,447.61 for a total available contingency of $335,038.25. I think one of the critical pieces, just to know about that, that's a bunch of numbers I just threw at you. But, you know, we knew we took a big chunk out of the contingency with the site work issues. We got through that based on where we are in the construction phase. The plans have gone through with a fine-tooth comb. WDC has been through there. We've tried to get through the various issues of the different, you know, what hits in this phase and that phase and which sub is doing what. There are some ups in here, the things that weren't clear. In many cases, it's actually an up because you're flipping it or giving it from one phase to another based on the contractors that are already in. That may have not been in their scope previously, but in the end, it's probably a savings by not starting from scratch with another contractor. So, we could talk about those in more depth if you'd like. But I say that all just as the point of, you know, really push through a lot of the design and planning and construction questions. So, we're very confident that, you know, that we're in a good space. Obviously, lots of things can happen, winter weather, et cetera. But we are monitoring these things with a fine-tooth comb. Newfield, Friar look over every piece, and all of these numbers are not the first numbers that came down the pike. This is a lot of negotiation, looking at things more, you know, in a focused way. And then WDC participating as well to make sure we're getting the bang for our buck, making sure we're holding people accountable to the plans, to the designs as best we can and that any change orders are absolutely, positively have to do it or frankly, that it's a credit or something that's going to save us money by doing it this way versus maybe another way. So, with that, I'll stop and scroll and just going to plow through these pictures and go back and forth of them so people can see them. But I'll turn it back to you, Ann, for any questions you have from the whole team here.
Will you let us know what we're looking at here?
Oh, sure. So, this was the topping-off ceremony. That's the last beam is the one with the flag on it there with the white beam and the Scandinavian tradition of putting the evergreen tree up on the peak of the high point of the building when they finish the last piece of steel up there. Here's a closer shot. You see that last beam. Those of you who are out there, it was pretty fun, the mayor to pretend came out and members of the state DAS and state delegation were there as well. And just to see that last beam go up, really nice, nice milestone and really a great day weather-wise. This is a view from the top. We've got a drone that we, that the construction team uses to kind of keep an eye on things. I think it really gives you a good sense of the size and scope of this. This is sort of from up in the top. Looking down, the driveway would be to your left in that photo coming up from Hamilton. So, you see the gym kind of right in front of you to the right of that will be the older grades and science rooms. And then to the sort of left or the center behind the gym is that main entrance. Grades for the elementary, and then to the left is the lower grades. And the playgrounds will be on that far left where that, you see that cement there. Here's that binder coat successfully in, you see. So, we're able to, you know, really drive right up now without having to go through a mud bog. So, again, that playground area will be right to your left there as you go up those two tiers. And then the building lower level and upper level there, both younger kids. As you go straight up to the top, you see that green up there. That's kind of the main entrance is right to the right of that. And then you've got some common rooms, art, music, and whatnot over there. Gym is that curved building, piece of the building there. And then the cafeteria is behind that. And then to the right is upper grades and science rooms and those two things. By that main office there is also a lot of the other resource areas, social worker, nurse's office, et cetera. And parking up top, where you see those white vans. And then there's a little bit of parking down low there by the gym. So, depending on what event's happening and what grades are involved and so forth, a couple of different options for parking. Here's a little shot of the gym. You've got some natural light coming through up at the top, and that's the slope roof up there. So, it's a really nice-sized gym. It looks great. This is some of the masonry on the back of the building. That's all been completed since this photo's been taken and allowing them to finish off that roof. And that side of the building is all winterized and has temporary heat. And they're really working inside to finish up. See, walls are up, some ceiling pieces are going up. And since this photo, really, some of these classrooms are really starting to take shape. Charles was in there with Jason and I on the tour, and you can really see it starting to, you know, you start to feel what it's going to be like, classroom size of the hallway and so forth. Here's a nice photo from the top. I think it's really going to end up, you know, really having some great views, both of the building from the bottom when you're coming up to it. But when you're up in that building and in the second floor, particularly now with the foliage off, the leaves down, you really can see the various views from all different ways. And that's one of the benefits of these construction projects, so you sort of gain some new insights and some new views and some nice picturesque views of the surrounding neighborhood. And when you stand up at the top, you kind of see different roads coming in. And for some reason, it almost looks like a crossroads. It's kind of an interesting spot, everything sort of coming to one across. Maybe I'm being too poetic in my view, but that's what it seems like to me. So, that's a few of the update photos there. So, Ann, I'll turn it back to you. I'll keep popping through these so people can look as we're talking.
Okay. So, item two is the review and approval of change orders nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 for the Wendell Cross Elementary School project. And I would leave it to the will of the committee. Do you need for Will to do a quick overview of each change order? Are you satisfied with the end result totals? So, what would the committee like to do?
I'm happy with the totals, Ann. Chair, I can't see everybody on the screen here. I could stop sharing to make it easier for you.
Yeah, that might be best work.
There we go. All right, we're back in gallery.
Well, maybe just go through them, just a brief explanation of what they are, you know, one or two lines. What does it relate to?
Sure. Why don't I, if I could, maybe I'll have Brian Grant from Newfield joining the conversation here and Dave Cody as well to walk us through. Again, a lot of these, there's a story behind every number. There's some ups and some downs. Most of them are relatively modest altogether. But maybe, Brian, you could just run through a couple of examples and discuss some of the work that you do along with Dave and WDC and Mike Serrano's here from Friar as the review process that's undertaken.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. First off, it was not our intent to bring this many change orders to the meeting, lest anyone forget. We really were ready in November with a number of them. But with Jason resigning and Ann stepping in, we were asked to just kind of pump the brakes, put things on hold for a couple of weeks, which is fine. We were still able to proceed. But tonight, you have nine through 14. And as Will had said, a lot of these are ups and downs that happen throughout construction. There are a few things on here, this being a multi-phased project. There were items that weren't completely designed during phase two when we were bidding like the site and the concrete and the steel. Because it was a fast-track project, things showed up in phase three that really needed to be in phase two. So, they've become more of a scope gap. And it's more beneficial for us to go to the site contractor who was bid in phase two and then actually get a change order for him to do it. You would have had to pay for the work anyways under their base contract. You know, now it's easier for us to use them because we have unit pricing in place, which benefits everyone. So, we try to make sure we can use that whenever we can. And to Will's point, there is a lot of numbers and a lot of information here. And, you know, our biggest job for you is to make sure that you're getting a fair and equitable cost. We told you at the beginning, and we're going to, that's our mantra through the end. We get the first crack at them. A lot of them, some of these ones that are, you know, $15,000 to $20,000, when they come across my desk, they're upwards of almost $50,000. Some of these guys don't completely understand the scope or they didn't use unit price. So, we just continue to chip away at these. We get them to a point where we feel they're a fair number. And at that point, we sit with Friar and WDC, and we drill down even more. If there's any allowances that can help offset some of these costs, we do do that. So, it's all in an effort just to make sure that what's being put in front of you is the lowest bottom line to get the project done. So, I'm not, unless you want me to, I'm not really going to go through every single one of these. There were some site lighting revisions. I think the existing stair on the south side of the site where that retaining wall was. Originally, we had some high-light pole fixtures that were a concern to the neighboring houses down there, shining too much light down. So, we worked with the design team to say, let's get rid of the poles. Let's put some flat fixtures on the wall and just light that stair instead. So, there were some of those revisions. Different size CMU when it comes to radius, you know, maybe a 12-inch was specified. But come to find out, when we worked with the radius, you can't do that with a 12-inch block. You need to move to a 6-inch block. So, some of these are actually some material credits. The contractor did own the work, but now you're getting a savings from moving from a 12-inch block to a 6-inch block. So, we account for that. One of the ones that's on here in PCCO nine was the gas line extension. That was a difficult, because originally, everyone was under the assumption that the utility company was going to bring the line all the way around the building. However, they were only going to bring it to the existing elevator. So, unfortunately, that's all that was really owned under our contract and with the trade contractors. We actually sat with Eversource, got them to agree to extend it all the way around the building. The good thing is that you owned the majority of the excavation, but they only brought it so far. And then we needed to extend it an additional probably 50 or 60 feet and then out to the emergency generator, which was not owned by the plumbing contractor. So, that's what that cost was for. Again, it would have been part of the project had we known. Unfortunately, it was sort of a scope gap. So, we negotiated a number with the plumbing contractor, moved that work forward. Let's see, I mean, PCCO 10, some of the last of the additional mass rock that we've dealt with. Will had pointed out the playground area, kind of on the west side of D, that elevated playground. There's some very deep retaining walls there to create that space. And even though it's outside the building footprint, we did encounter a lot of potatoes there. So, that was, we hope that was the last of the rock to go out. But again, that was a unit price item. They were measured in the field by numerous people, pictures taken, paid out on unit price. Let's see. There's some small things in here, fire alarm connections to the Knox box. Typically, there's an alarm that comes from the Knox box. If any are familiar with that, that's where the keys are kept for first responders so they don't have to break the windows. This project had it specified that it was going to go to the alarm company. We actually sat with Will and Chris Harmon and some of their members, and they said, "We don't use this on any of our other facilities, so why are we going to put it in here?" So, we actually took a credit back for that work. But, you know, a big credit here that I want to point out is in PCCO 10 is number 71, PCO 71. This is the modifications to the existing elevator. If you guys remember, there was a floor height issue with that. We were actually going to remove the roof of the existing elevator shaft, extend it probably eight to 16 inches, raise the cab, raise the floor. There was a lot of work involved in that. And really, to the team's credit, more so, I think, Waterbury Development, Dave really kept driving this home, saying, "I don't think we need to do this. We've got to take a harder look at this." And we did. He sat with Friar, we all worked it out, and come to find out, we do not need to extend the elevator shaft. We needed to make some small modifications in the lobby so there were approach dimensions kept and everything for ADA. But at the end of the day, you're netting a pretty sizable credit for not having to do that work. So, while it did take a long time to get here, I think that was an exercise very well.
Yeah, and Brian, if I could just jump in on that one, just because I think it's a good example for the committee. And you stated it quite well. But we, that was also one where the way it was bid, based on the assumptions that Brian said, the pricing we got from the bidder, from the elevator contract, was, I think, in all of our opinions, high. And there were some backend costs associated with maintenance that that contractor wanted to put in because then this stuff kind of becomes proprietary and you get sort of caught in that maelstrom. The backend maintenance cost was going to be greater for those elevators than... um, than we pay for the whole district in our contract for elevator maintenance. Um, so, you know, it was really something that just kind of was a tough one, that tough pill to swallow. Uh, you're sort of set up in the system of, of who bid it and so forth. But with the group really, uh, working hard, uh, Dave Cody gets the gold star from WDC. It just doesn't look right, smell right. There's gotta be another way. We actually talked to the state as well. We flagged this, like this could be an issue. We want to push back hard on these contracts. We don't, you know, we want to make sure we're okay and you guys are going to be okay with it. And to their credit, uh, Bob Selmer came out from the state, came out and actually toured the site with us, looked at the elevator with us. And we were talking about, can he help us out with a different credit and maybe a different way to navigate these waters? And then, you know, Dave kept pushing that and then, you know, it's kind of like a eureka moment. He's, if we just do it this way, we can go all the way around this thing. And the other, another vendor was able to, to, to do that and give us pricing for that. Then we had some leverage and next thing you know, what was maybe going to be a big cost, six figure cost, becomes a credit. Um, so I think that due diligence, as Brian said, it took a while. Uh, and there were some moments there where it didn't look like it was going to work out, uh, and, and maybe be another up. Um, but to everyone's credit, Newfield, Friar, WDC, the state frankly involved, Mike, um, Raj, myself, uh, really in this, Chris Harmon. Uh, I think that's a good example of what we're trying to do here, uh, with every change order, with every different piece that comes. We just don't take the, the vendors or the bidders word for it. It's, you know, everybody's got a, a role, a role to play here in this, uh, or a part to play in this play. Uh, so we all try to play our parts, um, and to some extent know each other's lines just in case. Um, and I think that's a really good example of one that worked out, uh, to our benefit, uh, in the end.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. Just a couple of the other little ones. There were some ceiling height changes found during mechanical coordination. So we had some Acxiom trim to kind of create the different heights rather than lower the entire area of ceiling. We tried to, to keep it to a smaller area and, and doing that, you have to provide some transition pieces. Uh, so a lot of, just a lot of little things. Um, the, there were some added soffits at the main entry because of some of the bulletproof glass, um, in those storefronts that are really key. Uh, come to find out, you can't attach directly to them. And I'm sure Friar can tell you, that's kind of a evolving, um, science, everything now. Unfortunately, it's, it's a necessity, but, uh, we had to, to break the ceiling away from that storefront system. And the only way to do it was to provide a soffit to attach the ceiling to. So, uh, some smaller things like this, you know, that have popped up. In PCCO 12, there was, uh, some existing wall penetrations in area A, part of the existing building. Um, it was found to be load bearing masonry. Um, we cored some new holes through there to run some of the heating and cooling lines and come to find out all of the roof joists that were sitting on the load bearing masonry wall, the masonry wall was hollow, uh, which is not a good thing. Uh, couldn't support the weight. So we sat with Friar and their structural engineer, came up with a way to sandwich some steel with some through bolting and kind of create a, a support for that without adding columns and piers and everything else, which would have, would have been a significant cost increase. So, um, we were able to get out of that one. Let's see, PCCO 13, some added tube steel, um, in, in one of the stair towers. Um, unfortunately I think that was kind of missed between a phase two and phase three, uh, with, with fast tracking some of the steel. Um, you have those ribbon windows that show up through the stair towers to give you some natural light in there. And this one's on the backside of the building, um, on the east side, uh, north corner. So you really do need the natural light in there. We toyed with not putting them in, but at the end of the day, the team said, this is something we need to have in there. Um, you know, one for effect, but two for emergency purposes. Um, God forbid something happened. They need to use the stair tower. It's nice to have natural light in there as well, other than emergency light. So, uh, those were used. But again, we have unit pricing in place with the steel contractor. So we take the weights of the steel. We apply the unit cost. We make sure that they, the change order is equitable and it's, it makes sense, uh, moving forward. So, um, let's see, number 14. Uh, Waterbury Development sat with us and felt that the location of the, uh, generator, emergency generator was a little too far around the building. They wanted to see it up a little closer to the main electrical room, to the kind of kitchen area where the gas came in. Uh, so we went through an exercise of actually relocating that. There was a cost savings there, um, as well, um, entrenching and gas piping. Uh, the pad got smaller for it. So that was another good exercise to, to give some VE money back, uh, by moving it. A couple of little things, you know, bollards at the dumpster pad. Um, you know, unfortunately, again, site was kind of rushed a little bit. Come to find out, we were getting ready to pour the dumpster pad. There were no bollards behind it. And typically if you don't do that and the garbage men come, unfortunately they pushed the dumpster right back into the fence and it's, it becomes a maintenance issue for, for the city. So we recommended that the two bollards be put there. But again, another unit price item we were able to, to, to take the benefit of. You know, I think PCO 96, which is in the last one, number 14, there were a lot of structural revision. This was one of the very first proposal requests we got. In between phase two and phase three, a lot of things changed and happened with design, uh, based on budget. So unfortunately there were some, um, structural members that had to be upsized, that had to be added. And again, we already had a phase two steel contractor under contract who did not bid that work. So again, you would have paid for it. We had to pay for it in a different manner. So we used, we applied unit price everywhere we could. Uh, but this was tied up with actually a lot of credits in the building because to the design team's credit, we sat and said, I don't think you need these columns. There's some areas that you don't need, uh, plates and pockets. So they came up with a lot of redesigns. So while there were some adds there, there also were some credits here as well. Not only from the steel contractor, from the site contractor, from the concrete contractor. So this one was kind of multifaceted and took a long time, um, to really get together. So, there's a lot of other ones in here. Those are some of the major ones, uh, just nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, um, I, I would say. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to, to keep going.
I think you were muted there for that comment, Anne.
You're muted, Anne.
Sorry. Any, any questions from the committee?
Yes, Anne. I three, I have three questions.
Commissioner Raso and then Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Senator Chair. Um, being involved, I think since the first school, school construction contract, I'm happy to see that there's all the eyes looking at, uh, looking at this between Friar and Newfield and especially WDC with Dave and Will with your staff. All the eyes looking at these change orders. I mean, I've, I've seen some horror stories in the early construction where there was one person looking at the change orders. So I'm happy about that. I'm impressed, impressed with that. And also too, comparing some of the first school constructions and, and, and Will, you brought up how, how you're involving Debbie, uh, Debbie Ponte in, in, into the decisions where I, I mean, before, things like that didn't happen. So I, I'm very happy on, on, on the, uh, the way that you're handling this whole project. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would just say, Rocco, I appreciate that. And, and again, I think it's a great team and working well, Mike LeBlanc, uh, as well, keeping us, uh, we have regular, uh, update, uh, meetings with the whole team. Uh, and, and I would just note for the record, certainly that Dr. Ruffin has been very clear that we want to have everyone involved and the school involved. Um, and, and that's been really helpful. Um, but the tech team, the facilities team, it's, it's, uh, it's one of those takes a village, but everyone's been really collaborative. Um, and we've gotten some really great ideas from, from, from all corners and, um, and found some savings and some support. So it's, it's, it's been a good thing, uh, at many levels.
Sorry, I didn't thank you, Mike.
Commissioner Harvey.
Yes, thank you. Uh, to the chair. Um, I remember in back in the early days prior to the, uh, building of our other five new schools, uh, we were warned about the amount of change orders, um, that, that we received. So, you know, as long as, uh, Rocco is okay with it, then, then I'm okay. But when I read this initially, I said, oh, um, is, you know, are we supposed to do this? So I'm okay there. But two quick questions. Uh, there was a mention of something around the heating, um, heating and cooling. And, you know, I just wondered, it came to mind, um, are we looking into or have we thought about the air filters in, uh, in the climate that we're living in now with COVID? Uh, this is a new building. Have we considered what we're going to do there?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Harvey, uh, great question. Um, yes, is the short answer. Um, and again, that's one of the pieces to the puzzle with the facilities team engaged. So we're sharing, um, our current practices and information. So for example, water bottle filling stations versus water fountains. Um, the filters as you're describing, we're giving them the specs that we use. And certainly Mike Serrano and Bryce from Friar have their, uh, recommendations, uh, with their particular design. And, and of course then you also have the, um, the manufacturers and the bidders have their ideas. But we're putting in there and letting them know our ideas. We would, would rather not have a unique, a totally unique, uh, building as far as how things work. Because we want to be able to manage and maintain it with our teams, uh, and what they're used to and familiar with. So, um, you know, there's a lot of discussion, give and take on that. Um, uh, but we're very cognizant of the revised rules with COVID. Friar is doing a number of, you know, rental projects for other clients. So it's, it's, uh, something we're all learning about, uh, and shared experience. The state also has given us, um, some insights, uh, and suggestions, uh, when we meet with them on things to, to do or be looking out for. So that's very much in the front lobe.
All right. Great. Thank you, Will. And one last question. This is not having to do, or maybe it is having to do with the, uh, uh, the change orders, but, um, are we, uh, when do we start to receive a good jobs report? When is that going to start?
Uh, that we, we can certainly, uh, maybe the next update, we can give you some information on that. Uh, we certainly have, uh, followed the, the bidding requirements and, and Friar, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Newfield, um, is well aware of that and has their job meetings and their reviews and, and folks come on site and check on, on, on those pieces. So, uh, Raj keeps an eye on that also. Um, so that may be something when we come back with the, uh, with the playground and, and furniture and fixtures and technology, we can give you update, um, on that. Um, and, and, and some of the labor, um, uh, folks who have been working on the project and some of the successes associated with that.
Okay. All right. And
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I would just add to that. Um, through NRWIB, uh, they do review and certify, uh, for good jobs compliance. Every application for payment, uh, from Newfield, uh, before, uh, the, uh, payment is released. So there's continual monitoring, um, and has been since the start of the project. Uh, they have, uh, the folks from NRWIB have been fully engaged with, uh, Newfield and with WDC.
Okay, great. So just lastly, uh, we did, the committee received, always received in a port, a report in that regards. I hope that Will, you know, hopefully start seeing that, um, as well. All right. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Um, and the committee doesn't include our community members. So please put your hand up if you have questions. No, we're good. Okay. Then at this time I would entertain a motion to recommend approval of change orders nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 for Wendell Cross Elementary School project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. And we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good one.
Oh boy.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Thursday, December 17th meeting of the regular meeting of the Board of Education, City of Waterbury. Uh, we are starting off our first agenda item with a silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have any words that you'd like to interject while we're in this?
Yes, Commissioner, for a moment of silence today. Uh, the following we ask to keep in memory. Kathleen Chagray, Chagru, uh, retired teachers aide in Waterbury Public Schools for 30 years, passed away on November 12th. Diane Moran, retired teacher at North End Middle School, passed away on November 18th. Constance Dell Principay, former school aide at Bunker Hill Elementary School for 20 years, passed away on November 19th. Stacy Metz, her professional for 22 years, four years at State Street School and 18 years at Tinker Elementary, passed away on November 22nd. And Irene Smith, former teacher in Waterbury Public Schools, passed away on November 26th. Barbara Giglio, retired librarian at Crosby High School for 22 years, passed away on November, uh, on December 9th. Uh, Dr. Paul Segura, former assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction for many years, and ending his career at Waterbury Career as a special advisor to the superintendent, passed away on December 11th. Marilyn Geraci, former English and Latin teacher at Willby High School. In addition to teaching part-time at adult education, passed away on December 13th. Uh, let us remember them and their families and recognize their contributions, dedication and passion within a Waterbury school community.
Thank you. Commissioner Juanita Hernandez, would you like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you, dear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty, peace and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, our first item is a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Devon? Actually she just texted me. She's having trouble, um, connecting. Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Present.
President Pagano?
I'm here.
Will, are you still out there? Will Zuda?
Yes, I am.
I have her call you. Will you assist her?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne.
Amanda? Yeah, can you call Will Zuda?
Uh our next agenda item is item number four. I would like to entertain a motion for this agenda item. Ann Sweeney?
Motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion or comments? Seeing no one raising their hands, I will ask for a vote of all in favor. Please say aye.
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 Uh opposed, or abstained? Thank you. Motion carries. The um number five agenda item is approval of the minutes. Uh I would entertain a motion for this. Anyone?
A motion that we approve the minutes from November nineteenth meeting and workshop of December third.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments? Seeing no one raising their hands, uh may please have a vote of yea if you're for it.
Yea.
Yea.
Opposed, negated, abstained? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Um item number six is public addresses. I thought I heard that there are no callers. Is that true? Carrie, signify yes. Okay, then we'll move on.
Amanda is now on now.
Pardon? Oh, hello, Commissioner Devon, how are you?
I'm sorry about having some technical difficulties.
Don't worry. We've all been there. Uh item number seven is the superintendent's announcements. Uh Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner, and um I believe that um SuJatha will share the screen. Uh in the meantime, I would like to recognize our two student representatives who are here this evening, Sumreen and Tenley, both from Willby High School. So so welcome to our student advisors to the board.
Good.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Uh and beginning for our next month, now that we have representatives from all of our schools, we will have training um before our next board meeting and and then we will have regular attendance from our student advisors. Now, the first slide that you're looking at is our revised grab and go pickup schedule for our meals. Um previously, we were not aware, we didn't know whether we were going to be able to provide it on Friday, but we are, and we want to make that known. We've sent it out in multiple uh media blurbs uh across our student enrollment. But we want to remind everyone that the grab and go meals for tomorrow will be at the following locations. Uh it will begin at twelve noon through two o'clock PM. And the meals that are provided are going to include breakfast, lunch, a snack, and supper. Uh and of course, all of the children eighteen and under are eligible to pick up a meal, and if a parent or a guardian would wish to pick it up, it's fine as well. And it'll be provided at those locations from twelve o'clock noon until two PM. Our our next slides, we have several um great things to share with you. We are not going to play everything from beginning to end, but I do want to um to to demonstrate to all of our 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 board members the great work that our teachers and our students are doing across the district. Uh whether it's virtual or in person, this happens to be virtual. Uh and you can see some of the creativity that is flowing. We have some amazing children and teachers in this district. This excellent is from uh North End Middle School Choir. Uh the fine arts teachers across the district, however, continue to adapt and over overcome the challenges associated with teaching and performing yeah in distance learning. Uh we'd like to thank Mr. Kamacho, who's the choir director at North End Middle School. He had his two uh his students uh virtually perform, and I think um uh you're going to be very uplifted by what you're going to be hearing for a few seconds. Oya Komova has been performed by the students at North End and with Mr. Kamacho. Just just about thirty seconds or so, SuJatha. It's just great. You want to listen to it, so you'll have this um to listen to it for the whole thing from beginning to end. There's something wrong with the volume?
Could could you all hear that?
No.
Okay, I can hear it on my
No.
I'm not sure.
Jatha, I think I had this problem before. If you don't mind, I think uh if you try when you um share the screen, uh there's a share computer sound at the bottom of the share screen pop-up window. Um if that if that works for you, only because I think I've done this to the board before in a video, so it maybe that might work. If not, then I'm out of I'm out of ideas.
I apologize. It was playing on my end. Um The other thing I I can do, Dr. Ruffin, is I can send this out later. Um I'm having a little trouble finding.
All right.
I apologize. I I could hear it, so I didn't realize you all couldn't hear it.
That's all right. I think we should just send it.
Yep.
And let's go, let's go to the next slide. Um out. And again, uh I need to adjust my screen so I could see uh Are we on here?
Yes, I'm still sharing.
I don't see a screen.
Okay, let's see. Let me, let me try this again.
I saw it.
Okay, now I've got it. Thank you.
Okay, so in North End Middle School, Randy Ramden and Maya Castillo. Uh on December ninth, uh eighth grader Randy and sixth grader Maya attended a virtual lobby meeting with Congresswoman Johanna Hayes's office. In the meeting, they discussed the opportunity to co-sponsor a bill in Congress and asked for her support to declare a climate emergency for cities in the fifth district. The bill imposes a carbon free uh that will change the behavior of the American consumer and cut down our carbon emissions by forty percent in twelve years. We are extremely proud of um both uh RAM and and FAM, which is the 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 team. Uh next slide. Uh Waterbury Career Academy Student Art Gallery. It's an amazing art gallery, and I'd like everyone to be able to see some of its great work that our our teacher, Mr. Bless uh Blasovich, created. Uh the virtual art gallery shares the work of his students, and the virtual gallery will be updated with new student work as the year goes on. It's a great way to share student work with the entire school community. Uh once you get this PowerPoint and once we put this out for everyone to see, you'll be able to click and see some of the amazing work. We have two examples in the next slide so that you can see just a sampling of what's amazing work that our students have done. Uh and you'll see um uh an artwork here by Yennefer and another one by Luna, and so many countless more from the talented students that we have uh in our uh entire school system. These are from Waterbury um um Career Academy. If you'll go on to the next slide. Um Arts Academy, uh students also brighten up the holiday. And uh they are participating in the United Way Upstarters Community Card Making Program by creating holiday cards for healthcare workers. Uh here are a few examples of their their cards, their creativity, expressing gratitude, and words of encouragement. Uh the work that you're seeing here is from Jill Hodges Arts Art Class, so the wonderful teacher who's spearheading this. And if you'll just keep moving on, you'll be able to see that the student um artwork that these students have created and also their grade level. Uh because we do have some from our seventh and eighth grade, as well as our high school students at Waterbury Arts Magnet. At Kingsbury Elementary, they they are doing school brain breaks, much needed, especially at this time. Uh King's Berry Elementary School has incorporated brain breaks to promote student creativity and involvement. The activity reinforces the school's mission to prepare their students academically, artistically, emotionally, physically, and socially to make sure they succeed. And there are a few short clips of the activities that are involved, and you can see some of those. We also would like everyone to know that uh we are calling all eighth graders to attention uh that we have the uh early college high school. Uh the application process has started. I I would like to ask our parents and our eighth graders to to pay very close attention to what this is, because I believe that for many of our children, this is a really good answer to their next step as they envision high school and post-graduate uh post-high school experiences. This is an opportunity for students to earn multiple college credits while still in high school. And additionally, they will have an opportunity to earn an associate's degree before they leave high school. Not only is this a way to prepare our students for college and career-ready, it's a way of being able to do that while in high school and to support them so that they can be successful moving forward. We are very pleased of our partnership with Post University, and we look forward to continued um uh progress as we go into our second year of early college high school. So please, students and parents, do not miss this deadline. Uh the application deadline for next year's cohort is January tenth. That's the deadline. And we're going to hold a meeting to inform our eighth grade parents and students about this great opportunity. That meeting will be held on December twenty-first from six to seven, and I look forward to seeing everyone who's interested in this wonderful school within a school concept, early college high school on November, uh on uh December twenty-first. This concludes uh the superintendent's announcements and updates for this evening. And um I certainly want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season. Uh we enjoyed our our first of of the snow days while still virtually connected to our teachers and our students today. We expect to do this tomorrow, um and the snow was beautiful, and I hope that people did have a chance to enjoy it, because the way that our school day is built, our students were and staff were able to enjoy it while still learning. And particularly what I'm pleased about, and it kept everyone safe, and it also makes certain that we are not uh in question as to when we end in June. Uh if we could possibly even set graduation dates uh in in a little early uh or and knowing that we will not be subjected to having to move them to the end of June. And I certainly look forward to what happens in January, mid-January, when I hope that we are able to return our hybrid model and then eventually to be able to encourage more in-person attendees to school as we will be opening a twenty twenty-one school year. So um thank you, everyone, and I hope that you have a happy holiday, and this concludes my announcement for today.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, and happy holidays to you and your family also.
Thank you.
Uh next slide is the president's comments, and I'll keep them brief. Uh as a function of our colleague Jason Van Stone, who relocated and part of this board, I uh I had the responsibility to do some assignments for filling his his uh his his seat in absence. Um and and I've I've gotten it straightened out in my head here, so please bear with me. Um under the building and school facilities of which Jason and as he depended on Ann Sweeney to be his vice chair for this committee, I too have depended on her for this inform role that she's been doing for Jason's departure. She's done a wonderful job, and I do encourage and and since Ann's been involved with each and every project over the last couple of years with this, I need her mostly for a continuation, and I've asked her to keep on as a chair of that committee. And I backfilled her position with Charles Stango, who is also ably raised his hand and volunteered. So well, thank you to both Charles and Ann, and congratulations. Um filling Jason's other two slots, one on finance and one on policy and legislation, I have assigned that to Amanda Devon, which is exactly uh the role that she's filling to begin with anyways, Jason's. And I think her background is going to be complementing those roles very nicely. So Amanda, thank you for agreeing to serve on those two committees, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And lastly, we're doing a little uh abracadabra role switching here, because our colleague Juanita Hernandez ran into a little bit of uh conflict issues on Tuesday night with the curriculum committee and asked to be reassigned to something else. And our friend Liz Brown ably uh volunteered to swap policy and legislation that she's serving on with uh Juanita, and Juanita is coming off a curriculum and Liz is going to curriculum. So uh thank you both ladies for solving a problem then before it was even apparent to any of us. So thank you, ladies. Um Those are my comments uh organizationally. Uh I just want to wish each and every one of you an incredibly rich and joyous holiday season, Christmas, whatever it is that you celebrate. Uh this is a great team to play with. This is a good bunch of friends, and uh we're doing a lot of good stuff together. So thank you, and I look forward to working again with you in uh twenty twenty-one. Thank you very much. Uh next up is uh the student representative comments, and uh Tenley Dieselings and Sumreen Mughal. Do either of you uh would like to uh make a comment, or both of you? Do we still have them? Okay.
No comments.
No comments, thank you. Sumreen, do you have any comments?
Comments.
I will take that. Okay, thank you very much, and have a great holiday, please.
You too.
Thank you. Uh agenda item number
Mister President?
Yes.
I would have make a motion to add uh something to the addenda.
Surely.
Okay. Um I make a motion to add to the addenda WTA grievance nineteen twenty thirty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Thoughts, comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pause.
I make a motion to add to the addenda WTA grievance nineteen twenty thirty-two.
Second.
Discussion, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Proceed. On voting for these two motions separately at that point prior to the consent calendar, okay?
Sure.
Do we want to do all in favor, or we got to do a roll call for this, Carrie? All in favor? All right, all in favor, please, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained? Motion carries and uh the grievances are approved.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no. I'm sorry.
They need to go at the bottom.
All right, now Commissioner Hernandez.
Oh, okay, the committee, the committee
Consent calendar.
On the consent, oh, I'm going to the bottom of the consent
Yes, to go to the bottom.
Opposed to the bottom of the consent calendar? Okay, then that becomes ten, eleven, and ten, twelve?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
No, no, no. No, they don't go on the consent calendar. They go after the consent calendar.
Removed the consent calendar. Okay, I got it. Thank you. I get very confused easily.
I know.
All right, so now
Did you do it to you on purpose?
So where am I at? Am I So where am I at? Am I at the consent calendar? We're at a general.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. Does anyone have a desire to remove any item from the consent calendar is delineated on the agenda? I don't see anybody signifying any, so I will read the consent calendar. Item 10.1, request approval of a student affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut University for school counseling student internships. Item 10.2, request approval of an agreement with Brass City Charter School Incorporated for transition services for students with disabilities. Item 10.3, request approval of a student affiliation agreement with Central Connecticut State University for student teaching opportunities. Item 10.4, request approval, request approval of a professional services agreement with Sue Vivian for consulting, consultant services under the School Readiness Quality Enhancement Grant. Item 10.5, request approval of a professional services agreement with Easter Seals Rehabilitation Center for consultant services under the School Readiness Quality Enhancement Grant. Item 10.6, request approval of Amendment 1 to the agreement with Ed Advance for transition services to a student with disabilities. Item 10.7, request approval of Amendment 3 to the agreement with the Connecticut Institute for the Blind Incorporated, doing business as Oak Hill for students with disabilities in accordance with the Students Individualized Education Program, IEP. Item 10.8, request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education 2020 Carl D. Perkins Grant. Item 10.9, request approval of a new one-to-one device program policy numbered 6141-3291. And finally, on the consent calendar, item 10.10, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 10.1 through 10.10.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries for the consent calendar. Item number 11 is the item removed from the consent calendar and. Juanita, is that your floor?
No.
I don't think so.
What about?
A new item. It's a new item.
It's a new item, okay.
Okay.
And where does that new item show up as?
Just a grievance number.
Okay, we do that now?
Yeah, she'll make the motion and the grievance.
Who would like to make that motion, please?
No, she.
Juanita.
Juanita does. Juanita does.
Okay, Juanita.
Okay. WTA Grievance 192033. The Committee on Grievance recommends WTA Grievance 192033 heard by the committee on December 15th, 2020, be denied. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comments?
Discussion, comments, discussion. President Pagano, can we get a brief explanation as to why the committee arrived at that? Thank you.
Yep. This grievance was about a one-day suspension and a letter placed in the grievance file at the complaints were made by staff and students in regards to her interaction with staff and students. It was investigated. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion or comments? Do we do the vote now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Kindly signify by saying aye if you're in agreement with this.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Next one.
WTA Grievance number 192032. The committee recommends grievance, recommends WTA Grievance 192032 heard by the committee on December 15th, 2020, be denied. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, this grievance was about a letter of discipline and termination of a grievance middle school director of sports position due to allegations that the grievant did not follow proper city hiring procedures in hiring a head and assistant swim coach.
Any other questions or comments? Could you please signify by saying aye if you're in agreement with this?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez.
You're welcome.
And if I'm doing my arithmetic right, we are up to item number 12, the superintendent's notification to the board. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I make a motion to receive and place on file superintendent's notification to the board.
Second.
Any discussion or comment? Commissioner Liz Brown. Yep.
Yes, I noticed that, you know, we have some resignations and, you know, want to thank everybody for their service, especially John Reed, who really, I had the pleasure of working with. And I know he did so much for the district and the science curriculum, really upgrading and did a lot with the invention conventions and really was a pleasure to work with. So I wish him well in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other comments or?
President Pagano?
Yes, please.
If I can echo what Commissioner Brown stated, that is truly John Reed and his impact on this district was just phenomenal and I wish him the best of luck in his retirement. He will be missed, but I'm sure he will keep himself busy, but he has just done a fantastic job with our students. So thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, and I concur with both of your ladies' observations of John Reed. Superb guy. All right, everyone. With that, we go up to item 13, unfinished business of the preceding meeting only. I don't have any recollection of any open items from the last meeting, but I'm willing to entertain any that comes to mind here. I don't see any activity, so I assume that I'm in sync with everyone else. Number 14, other unfinished, new or miscellaneous business? Anyone that wants to bring up anything?
President Pagano?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey, I just want to, and you know, you know, we know orange don't do this, but this is something that's been floating in the community, the educational community, particularly in this district. I just want to offer a word of congratulations to Sean Mosley, who recently passed the Connecticut bar exam. So we have, I guess, well, his father's a judge, but he's following pretty much in his father's footsteps. I just want to congratulate him. He's very, very humble about it, but that was quite, this is quite an achievement. So I want to thank, mention that. Also, I did want to question the superintendent and she can opt to address this in an email, but I wanted to know where we stood, what the status was on the position. And I don't have the exact title. I know we changed it, family engagement manager, where we stand with that. So if she wishes to address it now, that's fine. If not, if she could address it in an email, that would be great. And that's all I have, President.
Thank you very much and thank you for bringing up Sean Mosley's name. I like Sean a lot. He's got a lot of spunk, a lot of energy, and he's one heck of a smart person. So we need more smart lawyers, don't we, Terrance Shaw, if you're still there? Next item, we don't have an executive session tonight, correct? Okay, I'll take that as a no.
Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, just a comment. I just want to encourage people. The Manitak Museum held an unbelievable symposium with some of our African-American leaders in Waterbury the other night. And it was very, very moving and the courage in their lives are just incredible. So I would encourage people and I think the Manitak Museum is going to be hosting other, you know, other seminars with some of our African-American leaders in Waterbury as well as others. So I would just encourage people. It was very, very moving and very educational and I think very timely, given the civic unrest and the anxiety being felt by our students and as a society in whole. So I want to thank the Manitak Museum, Bob Burns. It was an excellent seminar. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. All right, who wants to be the lucky Pierre and make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, how nice. I even had a so move before Juanita was finished. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to?
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, everyone. Have a good one and thank you everyone.
All right.
Bye-bye.